Me and the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All this meeting, the orders of President Harv, Darryl Baker County Clerk, Terry Matthews, President, Charles Vance, Commissioner, Pete Harvless, Commissioner. And I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on January fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. For the discussion, others in favor, please say aye. The motion carried. Next we're off to public comment. We have Lower Mud River citizens. That's what we have on the agenda. Would, is there a representative? Would somebody like to start?
Yes, I mean Jennifer Metz.
Jennifer Metz.
And I'd like everyone that's from Lower Mud River Project to stand up so you can see how many of us showed up tonight. Thank you all.
Before you get, it's alright, before you start, Rick Robertson, Rick Roberts from E.L. Robertson is here. He's our engineer on the project for the Lower Mud River.
Now I want to talk to you all first, please.
Okay.
President Matthews, Commissioner Harvless, Commissioner Vance. I have a letter I want to give you all, it's the Freedom of Information Act, on what I'm requesting.
Thank you.
And this request, all the information having to do with our water project down Mud River, and as you see, under the code, it says this, to be presented to us in five days. I believe that'll be end of business next Thursday.
Yes ma'am.
We want to know if the money has, is still in the bank, if it's been put anywhere else, under any other projects, and everything to do with it, as is stated in the letter. And I think there's some other people here that have some things they want to say to you. Barb, you want to go first?
We are, we've been told that the water is going to be in two phases. And I'm in the second phase, the, Mr. Robertson, I want to talk to him, I talked to him on the phone, he's wanted to call me, and said that it was going to be in two phases. But it's, it's about twelve more houses on down from where they're supposed to stop at Little Buffalo. And we, we need water as well as the ones down to Little Buffalo. And it's just a straight shoot, not even a mile, right on down to Danny Shepherd's house, where it's supposed to stop. And I want to show you, right here, here's the water that we have. This is when you stick it in your sink, to clean off, to clean the sink out, this is what it is, right there, right there. That's what you get. That's in our bathroom sink now.
We know.
Everywhere, right there. And here is my pictures. This is my pictures. This is at the back of the, in the commode, the tank, right here. It's black, and it's nasty, and it stings. Our house stinks awful. It stinks like a sewer. You have to light candles in your house when somebody comes. See, this is the, this is the, this is the bath, goes in a bathtub to stop her. And I want to know if it's going to be in two phases. I want to know if I'm going to get water or not.
Well, I think Rick.
Ma'am, did you say you're making the record?
My name's Barbara McCombs.
Thank you.
I'm Martha Nunez.
And Mr. Robertson, who is he?
Look here.
You're the one I talked to on the phone, after I contacted Ray Hall and all of those, everybody I could contact, but there'll be more if something ain't done. But you told me it's going to be in two phases.
Yes ma'am, I did.
How's it going to be in two phases? When did that start to be in two phases?
Mr. Roberts, will you come forward and explain?
I mean, there's, there's, there's ten or twelve more houses down through there wanting water, and it's just a straight shoot right on down, not even a mile.
I don't know if everybody can see this or not, but this, these blue lines represent the Lower Mud River Water Project. There's a hundred and sixty-four customers, actually, probably, this might orientate you better. There's a hundred and sixty-four potential customers, about ninety-four thousand feet along, which is about seventeen and a half miles. There's a regulator station here, and a water storage tank here to serve the whole thing. It's about a six and a half million dollar project. Some of the funding is committed to the project, the county has committed money to it, the Corps of Engineers has committed money to it, and the Rural Utility Services has committed money to it. But there was also an A R C grant that was planned for, the Small Cities Block Grant that was planned for, and some Infrastructure Council money that was planned for. None of those three have been received. So what, the Rural Utility Services allowed us, or gave, an additional one million, ninety-nine thousand dollars grant to the project, with the understanding that something had to be built, if they were going to give the extra million, one point one million roughly, to the project. And so they asked, you know, something had to be built, so with their, with that extra money, plus the Small Cities Block Grant money, we determined that we could go up, coming from here, we could go up into about here, with a Phase One project. And that's the reason why it's phased, just because of the availability of the six and a half million dollars it's going to take to build the whole thing.
Well, now, why is it just going to Little Buffalo? I mean, that's, that's, we're here, but not even a mile.
Well, the source of, the source of water's right here, at this location, here at the industrial park.
But we need water, we need water.
Well, but you have to go from where the source is, out away from the source. You have to get the water here, and then transport it out through the rest of the area. And so we have to start here.
Because, you know, my husband is past eighty. He's got a pacemaker keeping him alive. And I'm seventy-seven, and we live up thirteen steps. And we have to carry water up those steps. We have, all the time we can use our water for is for a commode, and we try to bathe in it, which you have to shut, screech your eyes, and hold your nose, and everything. Now, we need water bad, because we're not able to get water up the steps no more.
I understand that, but we do not have the entire six and a half million dollars to build the entire thing.
This thing here that I, we got, my son got me off of the internet, it don't say nothing about no two phases. And it's all says, Lower Mud River Project, it don't, I got all this information, all this stuff, and it don't say anything about two phases.
Originally, it was going to be one phase, one six and a half million dollar project.
And it says it had, and those things, that it had everything to put it down through there.
I don't know about that. We've never had all the money. We've been getting pieces of it as we went, but we, we've never had all the money.
So when it was announced, back like September and October? Excuse me, Barb.
Okay.
And it said that all of it had been funded, and somebody was just telling it?
Well, as each agency allocates more money to the project, there's usually a press, press release, and I can't say that I saw the exact wording of that press release, but, but there's been several press releases on it, when a portion of the money was committed to the project.
I understand that, but it said that this all had been committed at the last one million.
Well, it has never all been committed. There's still three funding sources.
Well, there's enough to do the first phase.
The Small Cities Block Grant was needed in order to do the first phase, as we had it laid out, which comes up and gets part of Buffalo, Big Buffalo.
Is it going to go up Straight Fork, and, and Big Buffalo, and up Little Buffalo? That's hard, it's a miles long.
Eventually, it will, but the first phase was just going to go partway up Big Buffalo. It wasn't even going to get the entire Big Buffalo area.
How far was it going to go?
Uh, we're thinking about it in here, about maybe a mile to two miles up, up Big Buffalo.
Like they did, see, the cable disc goes up Big Buffalo too, so far, it's this.
But the intention was, is, you know, to proceed with the Phase One, but also make funding applications for Phase Two at the same time, so that we could get them to follow one another as closely as possible.
Well, we gotta have water, that's all we are too. I mean, it, we need water.
I understand. This is a very large project. The houses aren't really close together. It's seventeen and a half miles, and there's a hundred and sixty-four customers.
It's a rural area, and houses are not side to side in a rural area.
I understand that. But the cost per customer goes up in an area such as that. We understand the need, we're doing everything we can. If, if we can phase it, we can actually get at least part of the area served quicker, than trying to wait to get the entire amount to do it all. And like I said, as soon as we get Phase One moving, your applications will be made for Phase Two, so that it can follow as quickly as possible.
I am afraid that once you do Phase One, Phase Two will never get done.
I believe that.
Look how long it's been trying to get water, just down Lower Mud River. All this stuff from this, this thing right here, that red, rural thing, this here, all this information in here, it tells when all this stuff started and everything, and it was a long time ago.
All the conversations I had with, with both the County Commission and the P S D, they're, they're committed to getting both of these phases done.
You know, where we live down Lower Mud River, you know, down our way, uh, uh, cable stops at Big Buffalo, goes up Big Buffalo, we don't even hardly get a political sign down our way.
Yeah, I believe you live right in here. You, you live right in here.
I'm right near Danny Shepherd, you asked me about.
Very near the Invisis.
You asked me about Danny Shepherd, and I said I live up above Danny Shepherd.
I believe it was right in here, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, we're about, we're about a mile or longer from the Cable Lincoln line.
Hey, Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
So, we didn't get the Small Cities Block Grant issued, so we can reapply the Small Cities Block Grant, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, and when is the application? When does it have to be done?
In May.
In May?
And, and the decisions we usually made either late the year, this year it was in January, but most of the time, I believe it's at the, you know, the end of the year.
When will we finish up with the current Small Cities Block Grant we have? Francis Creek, the Hart Street?
Francis Creek will probably be go out to bid, probably this month, if we advertise to bid.
We'll be eligible for this next funding, for this Small Cities Block Grant.
Yes, you will, yes you will.
And it's our intention, or I think the Corps' intention too, is once we get the first initial monies on the Small Cities Block Grant, we automatically abide into the Small Cities Block Grant for the next phase.
That, or, or a different funding source. You know, maybe A R C, R U S is also an option for Phase Two, there's other funding sources that we can also apply to, to sort of maximize the chance we could get.
I think, you know, we've, we've let, we've known on this mission, these people here, that as soon as we could get the water, the money, if we wanted to get the monies and things like that. And I think what happened with the R U S, I mean, basically, they give us that one point one million, or however many it was, to go ahead and start the project, so we could get the Phase One started, of that nature. But we did not get the Small Cities Block Grant to go along with that. So, is it, is it going to be started, the project, before the Small Cities Block Grant, or do we have to go and get funded with the Small Cities Block Grant to start Phase One?
Well, this project's already designed, and we've actually got some of the permits. So, I mean, it's, from, from an engineering standpoint, it's ready to go.
Well, that, that's what I was going to say, even though we lost out on this funding time, this time around, we can still go ahead and get started, and go ahead and get the Small Cities Block Application, get the monies for next year to add to that project.
Yes, sir.
And then, I think, you know, commissions always accept this as our priority.
We'll be dead in a year or two.
This allows us better chances of getting those Small Cities Block Grants for this type of thing. So, as long as we follow this Small Cities Block Grant, with our number one priority being the second phase, then the money should come in right, the next year following that.
That's the plan, yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm a small Ray Hall owner.
Ma'am, is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Anybody else? Okay, I want to know if you all felt that the five hundred thousand dollars you gave over to Allen Creek to build a farmer's market was more important than our water?
There wasn't five hundred thou-
You couldn't let get them?
There was not five hundred thousand, yeah.
How much?
There was two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated, but there's been fifty thousand dollars.
Well, what about the other two hundred thousand? Can we have that for our water?
Um, we, as a matter of fact, we just gave two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, plus we gave a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
The Army of Corps of Engineers wanted to pay that two hundred and some thousand, I believe.
No, this is, as reported in the paper, the Army Corps of Engineers, I think, my records, they have allocated five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, if I'm correct, to the Lower Mud River Project. There was a misappropriation at the Lincoln P S D. So, the, and it was a misappropriation, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, that the Army Corps of Engineers wired to them. The, the people from the USDA, because the Alcohol Woodbill Project is going on, the people from the USDA contacted the Lincoln P S D, and said that if the money for the two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars was not in the account for the Lower Mud River Project, then they were going to pull all federal fundings for the Lower Mud River Project, and for the Alcohol Woodbill Project, okay? The County Commission authorized two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to the Lower Mud River funding scenario, so that the Lower Mud River Project would not be killed, and the Alcohol Woodbill wouldn't. But that's what we, that's what we just have, have done. Before that, the County Commission allocated a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to the Lower Mud. So, we have allocated four hundred and seven, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to the Lower Mud River Project. Out of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, that's been appropriated or committed to water projects across the area, across Lincoln County. So, the Lower Mud River Project has received fifty-six percent of all the County Commission money that we've appropriated for water.
Okay, and the church across the road, five hundred thousand dollars for that? And turned the electric off, and let the water pipes freeze and bust? Couldn't we've used that on our water, if you was going to let the church do that?
Ma'am, I have nothing, I can say that.
No answer to it. And all the remodeling, it was just done downstairs here. Is that not more important, our water more important than the remodeling that was done here?
Yes, ma'am. I think so.
And, you know, we've been five or six years of this. And we all were entitled to it.
No, try back if you want.
Well, ma'am. Ma'am, we are, we're losing everything.
I'll believe it only when I see it.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have, uh, Versi Sims.
You know that Attorney, Attorney General saying, you have to have clean water. Well, it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that the Lower Mud River people left, because this would have answered a lot of their questions. Because we have, I think, if anybody's been blind for the whole scenario, it's probably the accountant and/or Thresher Engineering, because the first document that you gentlemen have there was the Lower Mud River Application. And as we look at the second page, the financial, which was the funding scenario, it was titled, Alcohol Mud River Extension. Then if you go to the reviews, and you go to the Mud River Project, it started out as an economic development project with number twenty-ten-eleven-seventy-eight. And it went through the funding scenarios, and the money submitted. Then in February of twenty thirteen, at February of twenty thirteen, it was switched to a Lincoln P S D project, with project number twenty-thirteen-W thirteen-ninety-three. So, alcohol was not submitted until after, the Lower Mud River Project application was submitted in early ten. They went ahead and did the boundary revision, they did everything. The alcohol project was not, application was not submitted until November of twenty-ten, which was after the case six-six-two, which was the boundary revision. But, in any event, this, our financing went through, our funding went through, we were given a final on twelve-thirty-one-thirteen, with case number thirteen-thirteen-fifty-six. But somehow, if you look, it got attached to the Lower Mud River, and I think that is, that's when we started asking questions. And when the smoke cleared away, last week, we get this letter from Mr. Flora. Says, "I am contacting you at this time regarding the commission order, which was issued on the twenty-ninth day of January twenty-fifteen, in the above styled case number thirteen, fifteen-oh-oh-three-five, which was the new case assigned as a result of the investigation." And it says, "The second sentence of the second paragraph indicates that the district stated that the commission granted a certificate of conveyance and necessity for the Lower Mud River Water Extension Project in case number thirteen-fifty-six. This unfortunately is incorrect. Case number thirteen-thirteen-fifty-six was a certificate case for the Alcohol Woodbill in Spurlockville and Lower Mud River. This case became final on December the thirty-first, twenty-thirteen. The commission order as above should state that the district stated that the commission granted a certificate for the Alcohol Woodbill in Spurlockville, instead of the Lower Mud River Extension Project. In order to avoid any confusion, the district's customers, it is respectfully requested that the order be amended and directed to reflect the Alcohol Woodbill in Spurlockville and Mud River, for the Lower Mud River Project." So I think, in all due respect, they were given wrong information somewhere, somehow. Who is responsible? Who issued the orders to do all of this? It'd be on me, but that's how it went down, and that's why they were led in the wrong direction, just like we were.
That letter you read from that attorney, is it addressed to us?
We, we have a copy of that.
Well, I mean, he ought to send it to us, I think.
Well, it was a copy, it was, actually, that letter was written to the Public Service Commission. And the reason for that, it was because of, and you have to correct me for what paragraph it's in, I'm really.
Yeah, it's responsible, case number fifteen-oh-oh-three-five, which was, I think as a result of.
Now, are we supposed to clear this?
No, the Public Service Commission is going to issue a final, I think, correctly.
Okay, so it's not directed at the County Commission?
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
Okay, because I was going to say, you know, if it was, then how do you expect they to call it?
But I had, I, when we went up there Tuesday, we brought attention that the numbers were wrong, and they agreed to change it, but they, and that's why he wrote this letter, and said they'd write something, but they, they wanted to fix it.
They, and, and they indicated that, you know, the, I guess, the meat of the, the order, as far as being, you know, the two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, they were allowed, you know, they were allowed to accept the money, and that was basically the order. There was some, you know, some language that was wrong, that needed to be corrected, but they felt like that the federal agencies would be okay with that order, so that they would not pull money from the project.
Right, because, yeah, because it's all been a rye because of alcohol, Mud River. Mud River is Mud River, but it wasn't Mud River. It was two separate, they were two separate projects, two separate entities altogether, but they got combined in oh-nine. And it never got closed.
Do you think they hadn't caused medical marijuana to the whole river?
Well, well, the impacted area, the letter, the D E P money, it all, that's how it all started, when it all, right, and, and it clearly said it was for the impacted area, which was downstream to the line, which is from Spurlockville, where forty-six, where Volger goes into forty-six, which is Mud River Road. That's the upper part, that was the impacted area, that the two point four million dollars were for.
I just wonder if that's how they got it kind of mixed up, because that's on the river, and, you know, this is a lone.
Well, you know, I was just with Mr. Griffith when I first, when it first happened, and my story was probably two years ago, and he said, well, he looked into that, he didn't believe that was the case, but when it's my favorite way, two years later, that was the case. Thank you, thank you, Versi.
Thank you, Versi. All right. Next we have Charles McCann. Mud River Dam, five minutes.
He's taking that one. Hey, I do have to say that it feels better staying back here.
I always would have asked you that.
Back here, Tom. But I did want to come and, and just share with you, and ask your thoughts, it sounds like that you don't have enough money, which is nothing new probably, but I just felt like it, since I'd spent so long working on the Mud River Dam project, that, you know, it would be certainly, I think, worthwhile, just to share a little bit of information as you guys get ready to go into your budget year, starting to put things together, and work on that down through March, but the Mud River Dam, when I came on the commission, I'd heard a little bit about it, I remember we voted to put a little bit of money in, through the county, to buy that property and whatever, but I had no idea of things that were going on. And one of the things that you've got money in your budget every year, you have to put in there, is to pay electric bill that was created, and Commissioner Vance wired that, probably Mr. Matthews remembered, but they relocated so many ten, I think it was, major power poles, and, and somebody signed off on a commissioner down through time, and said, you know, "We'll reimburse that, pay for that," a hundred and ten thousand dollars or something. So, we finally got that E P, and said, "Well, we'll pay it off, six thousand a year." So, commission's been doing that. It just seems like it's, you know, there's things that, that come up, but people don't realize that, you know, the commission never, never has enough money to do everything, and that's one of the things, it's a thing that you have to do. One of the things that I ask you to be thinking about as you work towards your budget, is what can we do to keep Mud River Dam, Mud River Recreation Area, and make it bigger and better, and do things? How I got into it was, actually, when I was campaigning back when I first ran in ninety-six, people would ask me, "Can't we do something to make this a place we can have recreation?" And, of course, I, like I said, I hadn't really thought a whole lot about, but the time I got through to listen to people, I thought, well, there's certainly some issues here that need to be addressed. One of the things that we went through down through time was the horse park. We had lots of good people, lots of horse involvement, things like that, and we run into a problem, trying to, the commission had set aside, before I got on there, a piece of property up there on the dam, that would, made a place for people to, you know, come in, park their trailers, ride their horses, those kind of things. Well, the commission was put in a position that said, "Once this dam is completed, we're going to turn it over to you as a Lincoln County Commission, and you must manage that, as far as safety, as far as being able to enforce the rules for, you know, where it might be hunting, or where it might be." And so, we got busy trying to figure out, what can we do? And we didn't think we really could hire four people to be trained and, and operate the, up there, so we got ahold of the people in Charleston, said, "Have you got any suggestions?" And one of them was, you know, good with D N R, and see if they would be interested. Of course, we contacted them, and they said, "Yeah, we will be glad to take that." But I remember a guy sitting back there in the corner, he says, "If we take it, we'll run it." And I didn't really know what that meant, until we got into this horse park issue, and, and when they said, "No horses allowed, no camping allowed," and all that, I just couldn't believe it, that they could tell the County Commission what they could do with their own properties, but they did. And, and they said, "Well, we may not have the authority, but the N R C S out in Morgantown, who provided twenty-five million dollars to develop the recreation area up there, and the swimming area, and all those boat docks and things, said, 'That money was put there with the purpose of having recreation, as far as the swimming, and fishing, and things like that, but nothing with horses.'" So, they said, "If you want to pay the twenty-five million, do what you want with the horses." We didn't want to pay the twenty-five million, didn't have to pay. So, it's, it's- So it's, it's those kind of things that, that I feel is important to the commission, people understanding the county. There's issues that, that need to be resolved, but they can't be resolved very quickly. It's just like these water projects. Y'all wish we could just write a check and do all of it. People certainly need it. But people kept saying, "We didn't really want to give up our farmland. We really just, we'd rather stayed, raised tobacco, whatever, on Mud River." But they had to give it up in order to have this water project. And it's basically a flood prevention project is how it started out. And of course, like everything, it changed from two or three different designs to down to one lake rather than three or four. And of course, Boone County is supposed to help us and they did not. They, Mayor Monday, Clarence Monday, that once Mayor Hamlin, spent many hours and trips to Washington, whatever, getting this project done. And he, he basically said, "You can't depend on them to help you with it. You're just gonna have to do what you can here." So anyway, people kept saying, "Let's do this, let's do that. Let's try to have the Rick back here with the extension agent and come to us." You know, they wanted to further develop the youth camp idea. And the commission started putting some money into that. And I'd ask you again to think about that as the budget requests come through. They, they do ask, use it for $10,000 or something in that neighborhood to help keep that project going is a good thing. Mr. Gaypart came to us at one point and said, "We would be willing to do some type of music program up there." And of course, it started out very simple and it's gotten bigger and bigger. But we do have the Bluegrass Gospel Singing Saturday and Sunday the first weekend of June. But basically, it's about a $15,000 project that, that you'll probably be asked for. And I think it's important because it's, it touches a group of people who sometimes gives them the reason to come back and, and socialize in the areas that they grew up in and things. So it's a sort of a heritage type thing. Another issue that needs to be thought about is the people who like to hunt, fish, those things. They come to you and say, "Well, can't we do this? Can't we do that?" You know, back, years back. "Well, maybe we can. I don't know. If you don't have money, you can't do a whole lot, but we'll look at it and see." Well, the people who wanted to get involved in it was Parks and Rec people, the Shirt and Bass Club. And so they said, "We're willing to do the work if you can, through the commission, give us a little money to help motivate the kids and things." So keep in mind, as you get ready to look at the budget, the kids' fishing tournament. We sort of tagged it with hooked on fishing, not drugs. We certainly all have every day tried to improve our kids, their self-image as well as making good decisions. So it's good to get them out there. Basically, the budget for that is about $3,000. Sometimes we don't spend that much. But basically, I did contact the people who's done volunteer work in the past. And they said, "We will be willing to step forward and do all the work again if you can work with the commission and try and give us some help and way of the money so that we can do all this and make it happen." So I'm here making that formal request. I can put in writing later if you wish. The other thing is, just a couple of quick things. One is the, what we termed the turkey shoot. People wanted a place to shoot and guns. And the law enforcement people wanted a place to target practice. We had a shooting range over on Big Ugly years and years back. And people just wrecked it and tore it up. So DNR would not rebuild it. So some of the people approached us as a commission and asked us to consider putting one out more in the open. And so we started talking to people who liked to shoot and talking to law enforcement people and, "What do you need?" And so we got a lot of volunteers together. One of the guys is out in the area where I live. He ran a, like I guess, a oil, gas construction company. And he donated his workers and, and his equipment to actually develop the shooting range that we have up at the Upper Mud River now. And by the time we got it developed, the DNR, our friends, said, "You can't do that." And I, I never did take no for answer, but, "Why?" And they said, "Well, the people around don't want to hear the sound, the noise and things." So, you know, I go talk to everybody that live at just three different houses up there. And they really didn't have that much of issue as long as we posted. Well, we went around, we posted all that. And DNR comes back and says, "Well, this hundred acres up this hall and down the side, we're not going to govern that anymore. We're not going to enforce that." And they actually went to the, you know, I guess they thought it was a threat. But we said, "Well, we're just gonna do it anymore." And so they sent a, a codicil to their, I guess, the 17,000 acres, whatever we own up there, that they would not, they was going to exempt that hundred acres and, because they would not be responsible if somebody got hurt or whatever. But what we seen is the good part, not only does it give a place to people to shoot target practice wise, but also we thought it'd be good to bring people together just again, to show them what we have, show them that, you know, what we can do. So what we organized was using our junior ROTC people, the kids from the high school and their instructors to come up and be the people who take care of the targets. But in, in doing that, we made sure that we taught them the safety. We taught them the importance of being responsible, getting these targets put up, bringing them back, getting, following instructions. So we felt like that was a, a very good thing to happen. But same time, with the adults, we took, took the time. And again, I give all, you know, it's just Kareen's family and some of their friends and relatives that really do all the really work. But somebody has to, I guess, sort of cheer them on. I guess that's my role. But it seems like it, that, you know, a lot of teaching goes on, a lot of, you know, personal developments happen. People come back year after year after year. So those kind of things, I think it's important, you as a commission, you just, you know, and you hear, make sure that, you know, these decisions have to be made. Is it something that's good for the county? Is it something good for our people? And of course, you always have to say, "Can I afford it?" And I just ask that, you know, you think about it seriously, do what you can. And anything, you know, that I can do, I'll be always willing to do it. Definitely willing if you decide to fund it, and I hope you would. People, you know, help organize, make sure it happens, work with you all, make it, make it happen the way you want it to happen. But we just need to see if we can do those kind of things. And I just felt like budget time. And I miss you so much, I just wanted to come back to you. And Phoebe looks a lot better than I do at that moment.
And Mr. McCann, you know, all your projects, everything that you've started, I mean, I, I think we all would probably like to continue.
If you can get the money, I appreciate it.
And I just wanted to let you know that.
I appreciate it.
And I think one of the things that we as a commission ought to do is approach the power companies, see if we paid enough for those.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a lot, that's $6,000 a year.
Five hundred bucks.
First?
Well, we're on the subject of the Mud River Dam. I think now would be a perfect time for, because the, the legislation last year was trying, worked really hard to try to get that turned into a state park. I don't know how everybody's feel on that. But while legislation's in session, it might be a good time to call our representatives and...
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think you need to keep it. I temper that with who's running the show now. But I think it's important that we try to get it done. But I did want to come back to one of the things for the Mud River people. I know we've got still some here. That small city block grant, I'll put him on the spot. Depends on the governor stroke of the pen, who gets a, a small city grant. So I always put lots of time on the governor's aggravation part you're gonna call.
I aggravated everybody issue.
So you all from Mud River and the commission, the governor decides that. He may not ever admit it if he does.
Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Along that same line, one of the thoughts I had when Rick was speaking is that we get these people's signature on, on it when we apply for this new small city block grant. Make sure we have a petition along with all the information that we'll send them and things. And then when that funding scenario comes about, I'm sure the commission, we can, we can go up personally and talk to the governor for. Because, you know, this, this project has been going along well.
And we can write a letter to all of our representatives and have them put some, put some time and work in on it. All right, next we have Brian Vance regarding our...
This is gonna be good, 'cause I'm not asking pretty much. Just to be clear about that one. As you all know, I came here about this same time last year. Kind of introduced myself as a GM at Armstrong. Kind of gave you a little state of the, state of Armstrong. We're just gonna hold a couple of things here. I'm gonna do that same thing and let y'all know that, you know, our customer Link County have kind of helped us out this year. As you know, we've brought on three new hires and getting ready to hire another one. So business is growing. And if you all read the paper, you saw the FCC ruling about the broadband speed. Right now, we're currently, you can buy up to 500,000, but we're already making, we were way ahead of this game last year. So we're already making preparations to where everybody's base speeds will go up to 25 meg. Now, we have some DSL customers right now that we're gonna struggle to get that. But with new technologies coming out with fiber, we hope to be able to expand to those customers and get them 25 or more. So we're kind of, if you're worried where we're at on that, it's probably not gonna be a big issue for us at all. Like I said, probably 95% of our customers can get that much now. But your base speeds will be going up. I know in April, we're getting ready to launch a new video platform. It's gonna be kind of a, for our customers down here. It's gonna be kind of an exciting thing. I think it's gonna be good for the people of Link County to kind of, you know, 21st century jump. Some other things we've done, I, in case you have not noticed, we've kind of expanded our video of our local programming a little bit. We actually had the pleasure of filming the little kids' All-Star Tournament. I can tell you right now, I filmed football games. We filmed basketball games at the high school. And nothing went over bigger than those little kids. We probably had requests for DVDs for probably 35 people already that's wanting to see this. So we hope to grow that. And this last Tuesday night, we went in the middle school ranks. We got a theme, film Hamlin and Hart's play their first middle school game. So we're gonna try to get, as we get more and more into this and get a little bit knowledge of what we're doing.
Well, there's nothing cooler than an eight-year-old than to see stuff on a TV. I can attest to that.
The little, when you had a fourth grade kid come up and goes, literally looks, "You really film this, put on TV?" And I said, "Yeah." I had to step my game up. And then, "Don't." So it was a lot of fun. We are still concerned, trying to get some expansion projects to extend some of our cable system. I know the lady here was talking about Mud River is actually one of them that we're looking to maybe try to extend our cable service on down to provide service to some of these customers that don't have cable. So we're constantly doing that. So we've got five in the works, three of them waiting on poll permits now to get started. So you might see us grow a little more as this year goes on. We're working with a committee out here for Hamlin to expand this 4th of July. You noticed that last year we did, we filmed it the last couple of years. Well, this year, we want to try to maybe up it a little bit more. So what we're gonna propose is a contest. Whoever's groups doing it, we will fund a best float parade and give something to maybe a local charity. Some little monetary value that we can donate to a charity for whoever has the best float. You can be able to either go online and vote or come in and put into our office and vote. Maybe kind of up people's ante just a little bit. Now, on a personal note, this is kind of, being new to GM here, we're willing to help with this. We noticed that we don't have anything like a Chamber of Commerce or Business Consortium something. So we started thinking, you know, we're willing to help host something, you know, and get some refreshment for somebody. But we'd like to work with you all and the EDA to maybe get, we've got a lot of smart people in Link County. We've got a lot of business guys in Link County that really could bring fresh ideas to everybody. And we even talked about, you know, possible charitable donations. I think there's a lot of people who would give, just don't know who to give to. Where do we get? So we, we started thinking, if we could get something together, that maybe we could focus some of these areas and get people to, you know, help maybe some charitable nations, maybe pass some ideas back and forth. You know, definitely get you all involved. And then you could tell us anything coming down the, the road for us to look for. Because as far as I'm concerned, I'll tell you from our business, if Link County does better, we do better. So that's what we kind of thought. If I could get with you all and maybe share some ideas that we had and maybe get something like this rolling if you'd be interested. It's something I thought, well, I think we, we needed it. I know there've been, people have told me it's been passed around and tried a couple of times. They said, "Well, you know, I have a media site that will advertise it." So that's about all I have. Thank you for that. And I'll be probably getting in touch, or y'all getting in touch with me at the office.
Well, we were actually talking about that in the Link County Plan Commission meeting especially, about who the bottom was to handle. Date back, he's on the, on the committee now, he showed up to me. And that's one of the things, seeking funding for our towns to help, help stimulate, to do different things in, you know, in the towns.
Well, that's the one thing, I said this, if we could get a meeting together and you can move it around the county with some of these business leaders and meet quarterly or something like that. But definitely, I want to include the mayors of West Ham in the way, you know? And get everybody kind of involved and maybe get them focused on some certain areas to help grow it. That was some of the ideas we were thinking. And, you know, like I told them, we will be more than happy. If food brings people, then we'll supply some food and eat and let people come out and see it.
They'll bring it.
Yeah, free food, that's right.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Armstrong. I was gonna ask, is everybody frontier here? I don't think so. And I have frontier service. That's the reason I brought that up, 'cause, you know, we might want to invite them over and ask them what they're doing for the county. I mean, I think that'd be good. But, but we do appreciate it. Thank you guys for being there and trying to...
Next, only agenda Rick would dial.
I wanted to give you a quick update on the Green Oyster Project. First page you get is just a, a look at the history of the project. You'll remember that this started with a federal EPA line item in the federal budget back in 2003 for Link County. It's amazing. That, that started the project at its phase one. Probably early this spring, we will finish phase five. And the DEP, which has funded the last four phases, has told us that there's no more money for construction. So we're gonna be finished with that. When we put the final system in, we will have put in 117 systems, which is fair number of systems in the Left Fork, primarily the Left Fork area. And the average cost for installation has been just over $23,000, which is not cheap. And that's been one of the issues with the project, that these things are so expensive. Some other things I think are pretty important. We first started having community meetings in February 2004. And as of January, we had 159 of them. And we had 200 different people from the Left Fork community coming to us. Been a good, it's been a good process for this community. I think it's built a lot of leadership there, a lot of people involved and stuff. The other thing that happened that we're still working to improve is we've got this Left Fork Maintenance Association, which was formed in 2010. It became a tax-exempt, IRS-approved organization. And they take care of maintaining the systems of these building. So even though the folks I've been working with, with the DEP, say there's no more money for systems. I had a chance to meet with a DEP person from the Office of the Environmental Advocate, which is on a different floor. I don't think people in the DEP offices. There are zillions of people that work there. Anyhow, we're exploring on the next page some possible research options that relate to the project. And I think some important, one of the most important ones is to continue doing this monitoring of these systems to figure out if they're starting to tip toward not working right, why that's happening. If we can solve these kind of problems, it's gonna be a model for more of a lack of real. The other part of research that I think we, we have talked about since the very beginning, since the get-go of this, is trying to get somebody to do research in the least lesser expensive ways to do this. So that instead of having $23,000 existing, maybe he can find some ways to do it at $10,000 existing, which would make it a whole lot more doable for organizations that aren't getting the big grant. So my hope is that I'll be able to come back to you and say that we have at least found some ways to do some of this research.
'Cause you know, the end result of giving us this amount of money and it's costing us much just to actually do what they're talking about as far as seeing how long they last, you know, what it affects them as far as the water quality and things like that, especially what you want them to. Things to be complete as far as the money spent. They'd like to probably see some of that. Plus, plus monitoring the poll form, you know, we go out and things like that. Just to see how we're at with that.